Okay, item number one is called the Order to amend Tulsa Revised Ordinance relating to City of Tulsa Hotel Tax Code. We have someone here to talk to us about the hotel tax code today. Item number three, resolution calling for and requesting the election board to conduct a nonpartisan special election on February 10, 2026, and a whole bunch of other things. For would amend the sales tax ordinance, seven tenths of a cent, and five, resolution calling for and requesting the election board to conduct a nonpartisan special election of seven tenths of a cent, they're all related.
Can we just read them all?
I just read them all.
I have a clarifying question for the city attorney on number one. This establishing an effective date of July 1st, so if the voters approve it, that's when the elections will begin?
Beginning of the calendar quarter.
Okay, so that last week we talked about whenever it's passed, there's like a 60-day ramp up, and then it's on the fiscal quarters.
Hotel tax doesn't have the 60-day notice provision.
Okay.
So we discussed it could, the draft says July, but it could also be April.
Okay, but this says July, so okay.
Are there any elements of those agenda items that I didn't read or I need to read differently? Okay, we're in discussion.
Well, it's good to see everybody. It's been seven days since we hung out here, so happy to be back. We spent a good part of last several days working through some of the questions that were put in front of us last week, and this went in the next decade document. I only bring it up here because I think it was basically core to a lot of the conversation, although I know it's not just that. So I'm only using this document, I'm only using this document to roll through just some of these areas, and then there's some things I want to talk about in this packet that speak to them. So to the kind of first bucket there around homelessness, when I was here last week, what I think I heard from counselors is maybe not a whole lot of information as to, you know, how we get there and who's clutch and what's the strategy associated with the work that we're trying to do. And I will just start by drawing attention to not anything in the packet, but back to the executive order from, I believe, March or April, that laid out a couple of different priorities as related to our homeless strategy. One of those was around shelter capacity in the way of low barrier shelter. One of those is around the winter weather shelter. The others are around encampment decommissioning and then mitigation as related to evictions. And so as we think about the encampment decommissioning, that is where you see a lot of intensity from the resource, that's where it comes from. So the strategy around getting rid of the street homelessness is in your packet, both through two presentations that you've seen. I think Emily's brought this down here. I know you had the clutch proposal before, but I think Emily's been down here a few different times, but it lays out the various plans. But the big thing to really draw attention to, I believe anyway, there's a lot of things there, so I wanted to bring the proposal here, is thinking about like what does really implementation look like? It's here in a couple of different places, but if you take the last presentation, which is the clutch presentation, go to the last page of it, there's a page just like this. Second to the last page, thank you counselor. And I just want to draw your attention to this three-year plan. As you see, the plan is around eliminating, preventing street sleeping, then it talks about the effect of shelter flow. Again, the goal is to get to rare brief and nonrecurring, and so this is why it's there. And then this sustainability over time. So those resources that we have budgeted are to give us the resources that are necessary to address this issue of street sleeping, to address issues of encampment, to make sure that we aren't just shifting the problem to a different place. And that was a big core of the clutch proposal, but it's not inconsistent with Safe Move Tulsa, which is something that we've been talking about for a very, very long time. So you can think about clutch in some ways as a scale up of Safe Move Tulsa strategy that we all have made the decision to invest in with the opioid and, and our per dollars. So you think about this larger investment, it is essentially scaling that strategy up. So as you heard from Clutch, or as you will hear from Clutch, heard from Clutch, their strategy is consistent with the things that we've already said that we're invested in. It's just doing it at a greater scale so we can get, so we can get to a place we can very aggressively address the street sleeping aspect of what we see every day. Additionally, as you all are well aware, we have a winter weather shelter that will open officially, I believe, on Monday, and say open through March. So there's some shelter operations funding, along with eventually about 15 months from now, if we're sailing schedule, we'll have our low barrier shelter that'll be up as well. And so this is not just funding a plan that somebody else brought to us, it's actually funding a strategy that we've all already agreed is a strategy that we would like to pursue. And so I want to, I don't know if that's ever been made clear to folks, but I did want to make that, I did want to make that clear. And we can come back to any of this as we go through, but I want to walk through this, interrupt me anytime that you want, or we can come back to any part of this. The second part of what you all got, again, this would be if, if we were to move forward with the seven tenths of a penny, and you got a budget proposal, how to spend that for the mayor, this is what it would look like. The second portion of this is an investment in public safety. So the numbers you see there are reflective on the pay side at police and fire, we're getting where we are with our numbers today, getting that pay up above Oklahoma City, and then you'll see the performance increases that are also in there. You'll also see an additional $2 million in that number, right under the police number right there, right under the 6.75, that $2 million is to begin to phase in our pathway to getting to the authorized strength. I know there's some debate at this table as to what the authorized strength would be. And if that's fine to have that debate, but that's what that $2 million is for, is for a phased approach, because we recognize, just because we were ready to bank, you're going to have 150 police officers show up next day, so it's making sure we can phase that in over time. There's also some funds in there for downtown safety. We started that this year. It is obviously resource intensive. We think it's really important to make sure it finds a place in the general fund. And then the other area that you see reflected there is the $750,000 that will help, right now augment the federal grant around the Tulsa Community Violence Intervention Program, and then also so we, you know, are long-term funded. I think it's going to be really critical that we do have these community-based approaches to public safety, and that's what that's reflective of. So we can come back and we can have a conversation about that.
I can ask a question about the federal grant. How much is that grant at, or how long is it?
Crystal, how long is, what's that grant? How much is it, two, little, just under $2 million? So I think, I think it's about $750,000, is that correct?
Yeah. So it's $750,000 for three years?
$750,000 a year for three years, is that correct, Crystal?
Are you talking about the $750,000?
No, no, I'm talking about the grant, the federal grant that we currently have.
Community Violence and Intervention?
Yes. Yeah, oh yeah, you should probably come to the table, sorry.
Sorry, I'm trying to write now.
The grant, just under two, but the $750 included to support the care violence model, as well as some opportunities for grants for nonprofits doing the work, so creating safe third spaces as well.
So does the federal grant require that we bring dollars to the table?
That one, no.
Okay, so we have a $2 million federal grant for Community Violence and Intervention. The $750 would be additive to?
It would be, and so eventually, you know, the federal grant's going to go away, and then about in March, I think it was, one of the reasons we were behind actually on the implementation of the grant, is I think it was March or April, Crystal can correct me on the date, about half the cities lost it, just went away for half the cities that had it as part of the federal grant going away thing. I don't know how, I don't know how else to describe it. It, well, it disappeared for whatever reason. We were fortunate not to lose ours, but you know, it set us back on implementation, and everybody here knows.
Because of being tentative, we weren't here.
We couldn't, we couldn't make a commitment to move forward if we're going to lose the money. And, you know, I would say given some of the challenges that we saw with regards to youth violence this, this summer, and I think it's typical for a summer in any city our size, I think the way we mitigate that long-term is it can't just be a law enforcement, that we're going to have to, we're going to have to, you know, lean into those strategies. And the $750 is the way we thought. We can ramp up for now, and then, you know, I think it's going to be a very, probably going to have to work with philanthropy help, you know, but, but there's an investment that we're making on that long-term as well.
On the $2 million federal, and you may have said it, but when does that end?
So this is our first year.
You got it in late 2024.
Yeah.
Late 2024.
Late 2024, so we, are we?
It was the one we received.
So we're in year one, about to go into year two.
And it's two million total, or two million each year?
Two million total, $750, or it's a year, sorry, $750 a year.
Also, this will replace that $750.
So right now, we would augment the $750, because what, essentially, if you think about it this way, right now, we're going to, as a city, fund what, once the federal grant leaves, we're going to go and try to privately fund, so $750 is not enough to do the work that we need to do here, given the number of youth, given the challenge and the intensity. So the goal is that we, right now, will take city resources and, you know, kind of help augment the federal grant, and then when the federal grant runs out, we go raise private resources that will replace the federal dollars, so we can continue to do it at that kind of scale, would be the strategy that we would.
So like 1.5 is really the total cost?
I think 1.5 is fair. I mean, I think that's a good investment, but also I think it's a really good opportunity for us to partner with other folks on. I think us having skin in the game at that level is important, and I think it's going to help us out quite a bit when we do go raise money properly.
So this is our skin in the game even for the three-year lapse?
Correct, correct. This will be, all this stuff will be, but this is, so let me, this would be if, if we get into the ballot, if it passes, come July 1, this will be what I would send down for us to thought in next year's budget in FY 2026. On the $15 million on youth, there's a document that looks like this, it's not, it's not very pretty, as you go through it, it's highlighted in part, there it is right there. There are some questions, this is mainly to give a sense and respond to some of the questions that, that were at the table, all of which were fair. The environment, like we, there's, some of these things have been previously funded, mainly through S R dollars, COVID relief related stuff, and you can kind of see the previous funding up there, but what I think I heard last time was questions around return on investment for some of these things, and, and this is what this is reflective of. I'm not sure I meant to keep the highlighted version on there, so this kind of steps sticks out, I think just because we, we're trying to make note of that. But, but you can kind of see, you know, whether you're looking at the, the childcare side of this, and we're thinking about, you know, people finding childcare costs and the expanded learning case in this, in this particular deal, you know, you see the almost $12 million in childcare-related costs. Some of this comes from young people who I've talked to, I asked them, hey, what can we do to improve the city? And they said that we need safe places to go that don't cost a lot of money, was what, was what I heard from a number of young people. And so some of this is reflective of, but also it's reflective of the work that we're trying to do to improve outcomes, and, you know, whether it be high-impact tutoring, sort of on the younger end, or safe places for kids to go on the other end. It's really effective on the youth outcome side, but also effective in being able to reduce instances of youth violence, so I think that's really important. The next page behind that, we can even look at both these together, but this one is more directly associated with how would you go about spending $15 million, Mr. Mayor, in these two areas? And so, you know, the youth jobs, work that we would, we would want to do, that we would want to fund, we think the city could be a strong leader in doing this, would be $7.5 million, serve about 1,200 youth and the youth workforce experience. For me, I think it's great for the young people, we talk about pathways to economic mobility, so you have that part. But we also have a part with, and I know I'm not the only person that's heard this from businesses, we got folks coming out of school that don't have the skills necessary to do the jobs that we have here. And so this is, I consider to be a bit of a twofer, certainly getting young people that work experience and the opportunity to climb the economic ladder, a little bit putting some money in their hands, but also when we think about workforce preparation for the long haul, and this is sort of reflective of some background there, then on the bottom end, this does speak to the after-school, the summer programming, numbers that we've been able to work with, the opportunity project on, is that a $7.5 million investment, and we kind of talked about the return on investment and what that does, would help serve 22,000 children in youth in the Tulsa area. I would just note, as we think about the data in this community across the state, Oklahoma's 46th in the nation in child well-being. We can't do that, we can't do anything about everybody across the state, and this didn't even do everything for every kid in Tulsa, but I, I only lift that up because it does speak to the condition that young people face, and I think it does then make that a city issue. I guess that's why I would lift that, lift that number up. There's a lot of things that we can do in the space. Well, we were thinking about what are areas that the city could contribute to that are highly impactful, where we could build some partnerships, but we could see a direct benefit in maybe in some ways that, that also we're not taking up enough, taking up enough space in. I might misquote this, and I'm going to apologize, but in the conversations I've had with Green Country Workforce and Madison Strategies, the federal mix of dollars and the private dollars that are out there, somebody can check me on this, but I think the number is less than 300 young people are participating in those workforce development type of programs because of the availability of resources. I think that speaks to why we have such a challenge on the workforce preparations, and I think it also speaks to the challenge that we have overall when we think about the condition of young people in this community.
So what you're saying, there is workforce funding federally, but it's so small, only 300 can participate?
That is, that is correct, and I would, I will make sure I check that number, I think it's a less than 300 based on the folks that I've talked to.
When you say young people, what age specifically?
So, so this is, the federal dollars are 16 to 24, I think, really, I think some of the Madison Strategies folks, so outside of Green Country, I think they're 18 to 24.
They're older, so.
They're 18 to 24, and some of that is just because navigating, I think they see it as, you know, a 16-year-old's probably not as ready to go to work and start a career, but it's usually we're talking 16 to 24.
Mayor, on here it says it's 1,200 youth annually, would they be working for the city of Tulsa?
Not necessarily, so there's, there's a couple of different, this is one of the things from the programming, saying we probably would have some young people who would take the work experience here. When I ran these types of programs earlier in my career, what we actually did was, we used, you know, public resources to do like a wage share with a company.
So kind of like paid internships that will come to the table?
Yeah, and, and what we've also found for this work is that it helps to have resources there, like supportive resources for transportation, stuff like that, to get kids back and forth to work. And so what I, what I, what I think is going to be really important is as we go through and further develop, as we work with our businesses, and everybody, that we make sure that we're here, think about the supports and what does that wage split look like?
Okay, so shared, and then 1,200 a year, so every year would there be a new cohort of 1,200, or like?
So I don't think that would necessarily be the case, you'd have some crossover, but you'd have some young people, if we have age boundaries that would age out, so wouldn't be eligible, so that, I think you could look at that, in some ways, like we look at the labor workforce and any other, yes.
What organizations would be facilitating that work from the youth?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, you know, Green Country Workforce is actually on the children's cabinet, you know, I, I think we would probably, you know, work with them, you know, get some of the best practices we've done a little bit with them and Madison Strategies, some of the others that just run youth workforce programming, and so they're probably.
I don't know of any that have, that's why I'm asking.
So Madison Strategies runs, so I know, I knew he was going to do that, and, and Green Country Workforce actually works, runs this as well.
And they have some, they actually work with juveniles?
They do, they have, so the workforce investment dollars trickle down, and that's what they use for that 16 to 24.
Workforce investment dollars for that, what's that?
From the federal government, yeah, this is.
Federal grants?
There's a formula, I think, that comes to.
How less corporate we could.
Yeah, well.
And, and that's the unfortunate thing, things that we historically have been able to rely on federally and state because of the way our country is going, a lot of this is going to now fall on us at the local level.
Yeah, I think we got to be judicious on the things that we choose to chew off as well, right?
Yeah.
So I think we got to think about what are the high-impact things that we can do, so.
So I have a question, we're talking 1,200 Tulsa youth annually, when we have approximately 60,000, how are these going to, how are?
How they going to be selected?
Yeah, I'm, I'm wondering, 1,200 is such a drop in the bucket.
You know, I, I, I would agree, but I think here, you know, I think there's two things to think about. One, you start the first year of a program, there's, you know, naturally there's going to be tough, you know, there's only so much you can do from a capacity standpoint. I think two, with, that would be true for anything that we, that we do, we're limited in the things that, that we, that we can do. I also don't think that it closes the door when you build something successful and other people are wanting to come along their side to do. Can we put 60,000 young people through a workforce program? Unlikely, but.
All of them don't need it.
I, I get that, but I also wonder how these, these 1,200 are going to be selected?
Yeah, I mean.
And from what areas are you going to look at, NCI data, or are you going to look at?
I think there'll probably be a mix, I mean, like, I think the, yeah, yeah, no, I think that's, I think that's part of, I mean, obviously the goal, and this is the workforce investment dollars in particular, you also have to income qualify for those, those dollars, right? And so our goal in the Office of Children and Families is all around economic mobility. And so while we have not, and I cannot tell you what that number would be, part of this is, you know, do you have the resources and then, you know, starting to build on some of that criteria, but a lot of it doesn't exist, and so we have to make a decision on, you know, is it, are, are we looking at, you know, the federal poverty rate, like those types of things, and those would be considerations. I mean, the goal is not just to give any kid any work experience, the goal is all around economic mobility, and so certainly there'll be some sort of income qualification. Now still, you're still going to have a greater need than you have resources for, but, but, you know, I, my, well, he's sad, but he's, this kid's only 17, like.
You're talking about your son?
I know, I know, I almost want myself to cry. Like, he wouldn't be in one of these programs, right? It would be young people who, you know, who are qualified, or who can qualify.
So I don't know if you, if, if we're, if they're, if the, your mayor's office on Children Youth and Health have looked at other models, but the model specifically in Omaha, Nebraska, I've talked to you about that before, they, they have several initiatives in their empowerment network, but they started with youth and youth job placement. So what I'm hearing, the little bit about, you know, the structure is very similar to theirs, and they actually, to your question, they actually apply. They have, they, they have, and income and all of those things are a part of that, and then, and so, yeah, there's always some youth that, that they go based on the funds that they have, how many can they actually accommodate, and then they're selected, you know, based on those criteria. But to your point, there's always going to be a need, I would be interested, and I'm going to call, I'm going to call and find out how many, their first year, they started, they're well into it, but working with employers, again, the same model, but it is highly successful, and it literally turned around their crime numbers. I mean, they were recognized by the White House for the work that they've done in Omaha. Google it, if you look it up, Omaha's Youth Employment Program, and it impacted so many areas, but crime being one of them, but, because that's what he did. He went and asked, what, what's the problem? He went to youth and asked them, and they was like, we don't have anything to do. And he changed that around, and it impacted graduation numbers, employment, I mean, it just.
Yeah, it's, it's, and I think that was the intent here, is to find strategies out of work that cities do, like, there's some things that the schools do, we should never do because we don't, we don't have the expertise, capacity, it's not just a resource question, it's a, it's a whole bunch of other things, I think this is one of them. The other part in the Children Youth and Families, that was not something that I wanted to get too caught up in, but I did here, I think, when I was here last time, just some questions about the activities of the office today. And so there's a quarterly update that I think hasn't come to you all, I think it's coming later.
It's a follow-up from the.
It's a follow-up from the meeting before, so you have it, I'm not going to spend a ton of time, it doesn't speak directly to what's on the screen, but as you're looking through things that you have, this will, I think, come in the way of a council meeting in the future, but you have it as an update of the office for now, that'll be for another meeting at another, at another time. The last portion of the, of the document, the next portion is around economic development, I think I'll have it in front of me, and there were some questions, and Counselor Lake, you asked a little bit about the deal closing fund last time, and what I was, what I did a poor job of explaining is, you know, when we look on their deal closing fund was specifically mentioned, but the intent with the $7.5 million was around business retention and expansion. I think at the time I mentioned the work that I asked Erin personally to really work the work up for us, which was more of a overall economic development strategy, and so it was focused on the goals of job creation, business retention, small business support, residential and commercial development.
There's another document.
And investments in the asset. Yeah, this is right, this is where I'm at. Yeah, there, there, sorry.
That one.
Let's, let's stay there.
There's another memo that is in front of you all, that's what I was looking for.
She's also right, but she's also right, but I wanted to just refer back to.
So the $7.5 is this one?
The $7.5, so I want you to turn to page four on, in that, so this, what you have in totality is, you know, an economic development strategy, funding strategy that would include this, this vision, what's that?
Page four, and what?
In this package.
Yeah. So on page four, you see a couple of bullets, but the one that I wanted to draw everybody 's attention to for the purposes of this is the business retention funding involving loans. So this was a strategy as we were thinking.
But to your point, there's always going to be a need. I would be interested, and I'm, I'm, I'm gonna call, I'm gonna call and find out how many, their first year, they started, they're well into it, but working with employers. Again, the same model. But it, it's highly successful, and it literally turned around, uh, their crime numbers. I mean, they were recognized by the White House for the work that they've done in, in Omaha. Google it, if you look at Omaha's youth employment program. And it, it impacted so many areas, with crime being one of them. But, because that's what he did. He went and asked, what, what's the problem? He went to youth and asked them, and they was like, we don't have anything to do. And he changed that around, and it impacted graduation numbers, employment, I mean, it just.
Yeah, it's a, it's a, and I think that was the, the intent here, is to find strategies out of work that cities do. Like, there's some things that the schools do, we should never do, because we don't, we don't have the expertise, capacity, it's not just a resource question, it's a, it's a whole bunch of other things, I think this is one of them. The other part in the Children, Youth and Families, that's not something that, uh, I wanted to get too caught up in, but I did hear, I think, when I was here last time. Just some questions about the activities of the office today. And so there's a quarterly update that I think hasn't come to you all, I think it's coming later.
It's a follow-up from the.
It's a follow-up from the meeting before, so you have it. I'm not going to spend a ton of time, it doesn't speak directly to what's on the screen, but as you're looking through things that you have, this will, I think, come in the way of a council meeting in the future, but you have it as an update of the office for now. That'll be for another meeting at another, at another time. The last portion of the, uh, of the document, the next portion is around economic development. I think I'll have it in front of me. And there were some questions, and Councilor Lake, you asked a little bit about the deal closing fund last time, and what I was, what I did a poor job of explaining is, you know, when we look on their deal closing fund was specifically mentioned, but the intent with the seven and a half million dollars was around business retention and expansion. I think at the time I mentioned the work that I asked Erin personally to really work the, uh, Work Up Force, which was more of a overall economic development strategy. And so it was focused on the goals of job creation, business retention, small business support, residential and commercial development.
There's another document.
And investment in the city assets. Yeah, this is right, this is, this is where I'm at. Yeah, there, there, sorry, there.
That one.
Yeah, let's, let's stay there.
There's another memo that is in front of you all. That's what I was looking for.
She's, she's also right. This is what I was looking for, but she's also right. Uh, but I wanted to just refer back to.
So the seven point five is this one?
The seven point, so I want you to turn to page four on, in that.
In this?
So this, what you have in totality is, you know, an economic development strategy, funding strategy that would include this. This vision, what we're looking for, what's that?
Page four and what?
In this package.
Yeah. So on page four, you see, uh, a couple of bullets, but the one that I wanted to draw everybody's attention to for the purposes of this is the business retention funding involving loans. So this was a strategy, as we were thinking about, how do you really support existing businesses? Particularly as we, you know, could face some economic headwinds and all the things going on, and trying to focus in on the, basically, the, the back-run economy, which is the folks who are here. And how could we, uh, address some of the capital needs issues in the revolving loan fund? And so this is separate from the deal closing fund, but the deal closing, a deal closing fund is something, I think, long-term, as far as economic development strategy, is something that I would love for us to think about.
What is that?
A deal closing fund?
Yeah, what is it?
So if you think about, like, for example, if we get, uh, a company.
But that's not in here.
It's in that, but that's not what I'm talking about in the seven and a half million dollars. Because it was, it was part of a broader, uh, economic development strategy. What we're talking about is business retention support for this thing. But I do think, because I, I just want to be very clear, I do think some sort of a deal closing fund at some point is a really good idea for the city. Now, and, and the example I would use is, you know, really our only economic development tool that we have for the most part is tipped. And it would be nice to diversify the mix that we have when we think about incentives to be able to get companies here. And so that's why the deal closing fund is, is on there, um, and we kept it on there. But the real intention with the seven and a half million dollars for this conversation has been all around, how do we support existing businesses that are in business, as we're busy today? And that is referenced more directly in the strategy on page four. Less about the deal closing fund, more about putting together some revolving loan, loan programs for existing companies.
When you say support, you mean helping them expand?
Could be. Could be helping them expand. It could be, you know, you got a new, say you got a new piece of machinery, and you need support, train your employees, and you want to get access to capital, do that. Or something like that, that you're going to pay back. Like, we just have a, and we'd have to, there'd be, you know, some engagement on, how do we make sure something's effective? Easy access to capital, it could be paid back, right? So there's some rules that we have to establish. But the intention was around making sure that we had a retention fund. The best thing that we do, I think, for existing businesses right now, um, is help connect them to each other and listen to them be upset about stuff, and not necessarily have real ways to help them. But primarily, for the most part, the incentives that we have are all for new companies coming in, and they'll have the title to make sure people have easier time saving business.
So up there it says seven point five, but on the business retention funding involving loans, it says eight.
Yeah, I mean, the, the, so, well, we, yeah, for sure, so.
I just want to make sure we're talking about the same thing.
The seven and a half, the seven and a half's there. We are talking about the same thing.
Okay.
This is, as we put this together, and we, so you see the date on this, this memo, this is September third.
Oh, okay.
It says September third, it was like, hey, what, what would be our dream scenario if we were putting all these things together? That's accurate to what, again, I would take, bring to from a budget submission, um, this, this next year. So if I was taking, if, if you all sent to a ballot and voters passed seven tenths of a penny, what you would get in my budget proposal back to you is seven and a half million dollars for business retention. And, but, but this speaks to what that, what that would mean. The last portion, uh, on this document, this document up there, you're going to scroll down, Sarah, um, is the taking care of what we have. Uh, it might be up again. Well, that was something I was looking for.
It was above the seven point five one.
Oh, sorry, I skipped it. All right, yeah, sorry. Back to above. No, no, down a little bit.
Ten point eight three.
All right, there we go, yeah. Sorry, I, I got them out of order unintentionally. Uh, one of the parts we talked about at the retreat, um, was the take care of what we have. And I know there was a desire this last year in the budget to fund animal services at an appropriate level, so that is reflective here. We've talked a lot about the cliff that we're on of municipal courts, and all those are critical positions, and so that one point six is also reflected here. The parks and facilities money, frankly, is not enough for what we need to do to, to keep up, but, but this is, this is what we would send out. And then the report, the employee retention resources with sworn employees backed out of that is what you see, uh, there at the bottom. We weren't able, as we all know, to get that done in this budget year. I think it's critical that we, that we do. I don't see a pathway to do that, um, in the current, with the current budget. We're going to be very flat again this year with the goal to, um, get rid of that reliance on fund balance. And so, you know, there's not going to be the space to do that, um, unless we do something dramatically different with the, with the budget. Now you can scroll on down to the next deal.
Oh, can I go back?
Yep.
So on, back to that seven, seven point five.
Yes, ma'am.
So this document, you focused on that one area, but it's, this is not, this in, in its entirety is not a part.
This is a piece of a bigger strategy.
Yeah, that's, yeah, no, that's a piece of a bigger strategy. So what, what, what that seven point five is reflective of is a portion of this economic development strategy that we began to outline earlier this fall. And so that's what I wanted to make sure that when, when, when we come and talk about that seven and a half, and how we would want to spend it to support companies, it is referring to that one portion of a broader economic development strategy. It's going to take, you know, vision and all the other stuff to actually invest in the deal closing fund. Yeah, like, that, that's not something that, you know, we even, uh, desire to do right now, because I think it's, to me, a deal closing fund, those kind of things are very much vision-type of investments. Those are not necessary.
These other categories will be more so envision.
Or we'll figure out how to resource them in different ways, but the eighth mil, the seven and a half million dollars, which is eight in there, is what I want us to focus on. Especially given the instability, that we see some type of economic mix, we can support local businesses here. This is just, I mean, something that everybody is seeing, and everybody knows where we are from a, um, a dollars and cents standpoint on the sales tax rate. Uh, and what this funding proposal is, it's, you know, seven tenths of a penny. Uh, again, it is, it is not, uh, nothing. I mean, it is real money. And I know we talked last time about what does that cost a household? And so you have a spreadsheet, and I'm.
Yes, I found it.
Yeah, it's on the back of the We're Next Decade, uh, document. And that spreadsheet kind of outlines, you know, what, what we cost. And I'll say, it's a bit of an overestimation, because this estimates that only people in Tulsa pay sales taxes in Tulsa. That means that there isn't one person lives anywhere else that paid sales taxes, and, but this, sales taxes are just generally hard to, to be able to assess. And so, as you can see on that spreadsheet, uh, if you look all the way to the, the second column from the right. So the point seven tenths of a penny, or the seven tenths of a penny, uh, per year cost, family of four, hundred and twenty-eight dollars. Median household income cost, hundred and thirty-four dollars. Breaks out to, as you can see, the ten dollars a month on one end, the eleven, twenty-three on the other. Put slightly differently, a ten-dollar purchase is going to cost a little less than a penny more. A hundred-dollar purchase is going to cost people seventy cents more, and a thousand-dollar purchase is going to cost folks seven dollars more, just to put it in context on the individual type of, uh, spend. Again, that is, those are true, um, but the, the hundred and twenty-eight, the one thirty-four, the, the average cost of folks to, to the individual, again, is an overestimation, assuming that only people in the city of Tulsa pay sales taxes in the city of Tulsa. So those numbers would be low, um, but it's, it's, it's really difficult to gauge. So you kind of get a feel of, of what we're talking about to the best extent, uh, that we, that we were able to do that. Yes, ma'am.
So small businesses don't pay sales taxes on what they resell, but they do pay sales taxes on what they purchase unless they're nonprofits, which in the state only has a very limited definition of what nonprofits their sales tax exempt, so.
Yeah, I mean, that is, that is, uh.
Goods and services, right?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, that's, that's, blanks, it's hard to get an estimate on that.
Okay.
Um, there's certainly a cost to, to really anybody that buys something, essentially. What we wanted to do is get as much information as we could about the cost to the individual or a family. Uh, some of, like, said, sales tax, some of it is really, really hard to, to assess out. But I mean, one way to kind of think through that to an individual business, and that's the reason why we kind of broke out the ten, hundred, thousand-dollar deal, because you could extrapolate that out on a ten thousand-dollar purchase if you wanted to, for example, or, you know, five hundred thousand-dollar purchase. But just to give a sense, because we know this is not everything, like what, what this looks like as you think about huge jumps in spending. So with all of that, um, I'm happy to take, uh, any questions, uh, you might have. I think I'd want to just kind of reinforce a couple of points, and I, and I've talked to a couple of councils about this, um, about timing. You know, and I think there's been a lot of conversation about why now, why we, why don't we have more time? And I think all those things are, are reasonable questions. The biggest driver of it has been, we have a state election now, uh, which typically is going to be a December third timeline. I think, if I'm not mistaken, it made it to November nineteenth timeline. Um, we did not necessarily account for that. The other reason, but the reason why February tenth is important, uh, from a policy perspective, is because it ensures, well, A, I mean, should voters approve it? It ensures that the resources would come to us next budget year, so as we go through the budget process, we can go into it, we'll know by February eleventh. Uh, if we're going to be able to appropriate additional dollars, so we can not necessarily make a decision about additional money in a vacuum. I think the best way to get the greatest impact, uh, from all the resources the city has to solve problems is to do it all next, uh, budget cycle. I think that's really, really important. I would also note that things like Safe Move, for example, um, was paid for out of our put-in opioid dollars. So that means that there's not general fund money currently, um, that we have, uh, to, to resource that. I mean, you know, and, you know, we can make some decisions about that, but it's certainly going to mean that you're going to have to find somewhere else. But I think as we look at the numbers that we got from experts and stuff like that, um, we don't have the resources currently to do the things that we need to do. And I do feel like we're in a space where citizens understand that. I think they have a much broader understanding than we probably give them credit for about the position the city's in right now. And so I continue to push, although I know it's quick, and I'm not doing it to, you know, uh, make people feel uncomfortable. I'm doing it because I think it is the very best policy direction for the city. And I, you know, as I said before, like, I, I don't, I don't take any pleasure in being like, hey, you know what we need to do? You know, I, I was just, just celebrating my first, uh, year since I've been elected. I did not expect to be here saying, you know, we need to raise revenue to do these things, but, but we're in that place. I know everybody is aware of the budget imbalance we have, the reliance on fund balance. You know, we, we obviously have to take care of that, but we have a big city to take care of. Went back and looked, the Oklahoma City sales tax rate where it is. I just went back the last seven years and said, you know, if we were equal to Oklahoma City even, we would have invested an additional four hundred and twenty million dollars in ourselves since twenty eighteen, as an example. Um, and I don't think Oklahoma City's gotten smaller. I don't think that people have been trying to move out of there. Oklahoma City has gotten, it's grown, it's, it's fine, it's vibrant. I think that we've said over and over again, and it's true, that, you know, Tulsa's the most generous city. And I don't, I think that, that folks understand. There we go. Uh, but I also don't think that that is limited to, you know, folks who are wealthy. I think a lot of folks recognize the challenges that the city faces, and they want to see us do something about them, and, and I, I want to give them that opportunity. Thanks, fellas.
Yeah, I have a few questions that I've gotten from constituents over the past week. Actually, I guess even like over the, I think I got tagged in something before I came in here, and I was like, okay, that was a good question. Why, for your point, related to like the amount and, um, like, you know, Oklahoma City? Why go above Oklahoma City and our neighbors? Or I, this ties in with the, a following question of, did the eighty million dollar amount get determined first, and then back ended into, it should increase to this amount? Or was it, let's increase it this amount, and that'll give us eighty mil, you know, like, which, what came, was it chicken egg?
Yeah, it's a good question. So, so, you know, we thought about this initially on a, um, I think, I think the, the initial was, the conversation was around the five-tenths, if I'm not mistaken. And then what we got was, um, for five-tenths, you know, we'd be in the fifty-ish million-dollar range, and then, you know, then we're looking at, okay, what are the, what are the glaring needs that we have as a community? And if we were to take the resources around homelessness and public safety alone, um, that is every last penny of that money, just about. That doesn't get us on the employee retention side, doesn't dis round missed reports or animal services or whatever. So really backed into it based on what we knew were needs from last budget year, every year needs from last budget year, the emerging challenges that we have, and the desire, uh, to really jump ahead so we can get ourselves on a better pathway when it comes to the law force side, being able to recruit. So this is not just about giving people raises, this is a strategy to, for recruitment. And I think we have all heard, uh, a number of times, you know, we say, well, we don't have enough for this or the other. I think the other part, and it's one hundred percent true, is, this is my view. I do think that a marker of how a community's doing overall is how it invests in young people. And, and I think that's critical. And so it was less about, um, we just came up with the number, and eighty million was the number. It was more about, hey, let's take a look at, it's been forty-five years since we did this before, when it was raised by an entire penny. This is about really the next twenty-five years, not about a bad budget year or anything like that, but about the city making a decision that I think, you know, was probably going to be at least twenty-five, maybe forty-five years before the city does it again. And so like, knowing that homelessness is a challenge today, our goal is that it won't be a challenge for the future, for future generations. But there will be new challenges, and the city's going to have to be in a position to meet those challenges without having to have a, you know, a sales tax increase conversation every five years to, to meet those needs.
Um, and then as, uh, thank you, that's, I think that's helpful context. And then as another, um, question that I've gotten from a number of constituents, like, right, we all know that we don't have a lot of different options when it comes to taxable, like, you know, taxable resources, right? We don't, property tax isn't something the city collects. And so I've had, uh, folks, you know, I think especially in light of what's been happening with SNAP and things like that, concerned about how this is regressive. And I know that's been, of course, a conversation topic before. Was there ever, has there been an eye or consideration on, um, doing an increase that would exempt food or hygiene products? Like, this is something, just like, if, if we're doing this regressive approach. Because I will also name that, right, we know that it's regressive, these kinds of things hurt people who are the poorest the most. And then that's where you want to show that ROI on, hey, how's it going to get back into those, like, most vulnerable people's pockets, or like, cause like the least amount of harm to them economically? And it's kind of a, like, Keynesian economic approach to be like, hey, this is definitely going to benefit you. So I was trying to think of, like, harm reduction ways to mitigate that, so did get curious if there was any eye or lens on, yeah, like exempting certain basic meat items.
Yeah, that's not something that, that I have had a conversation about. And I'll tell you, kind of my thinking around that, is because we are so limited in what we can do, further limiting yourself actually then puts you in a, kind of back in the same spot in a lot of ways. And I, what I don't want us to, not that I'm saying that we are, but I think the thing to remember is that there's also a high degree of accountability with this stuff. So we're saying, hey, you're investing, and we're delivering on something, because it is mitigating some of the challenges around homelessness. It's mitigating the public safety issues. It's making sure that we're putting, um, some, some money into these programs that help these young people in their economic ability. It actually is investing in small businesses. So, so there's part of this where like, there's a, there's a cost-benefit deal even to the taxpayer, I think has to be, that, that they, that they ultimately have to make a decision about. But, you know, as we start to carve out things, there's an impact. And I think the other thing that is true, and, because I don't, I totally get where people are coming from, uh, on that, is that as I think about income taxes that we all pay, some of that money right now that we all pay in is, you know, in Alabama or South Carolina. Some of the income taxes and state sales taxes that we pay, that's all that money's in Burns Flat, and some of that money's in, you know, Paul's Valley. The sales tax revenue that people pay into staying right here to solve problems that we have right here, because we have zero control over the money that's going to DC, or the money that's going to Oklahoma City. And because we have zero control, um, we don't have the ability to make decisions at this table and in this building about how we're going to meet the needs that our citizens are facing. We got to hope somebody else is going to make that decision. And so I would just say, like, I think there's also a part of it where the return on investment, although regressive and no doubt, and I think it's crazy that the state of Oklahoma limits cities the way it does, although regressive, every piece of that resource comes right back here to make the city better. And so like, again, I, I've not had a conversation about that. I don't know how it would impact things on the projections, but I think it would impact in a way that it would sorely cap our ability to address the needs that we have identified.
Yeah, and then I do just want to clarify, this is just like a, kind of, to the public, right, we're discussing all of what could be done, and, you know, we just went through in depth what could be done with increased revenue, but what we're talking about putting up for a vote isn't allocating those dollars right now. Like, I just want to make sure, like, right, we're kind of going, hey, with these dollars, we could do this and invest in the community in this way, um, with a lot of, like, things that are, I think, really good, like, you know, goals. And what we're actually talking about still is just broad money, which I'll stop, I just wanted to make sure, like, I think, I've gotten a lot of different, like, people, you know, I've gotten emails where someone's like, you need to let us vote for this so that we can start investing in kids. And I'm like, that could lead to that happening, or. And I'm like, that could lead to that happening, or all of us, what if, what if every single counselor here doesn't get elected next cycle? And you have a whole bunch of people who either, you know, if like, you know, I would like pour it all only into police, which some people would be like, I don't know about that, or pull it all into the economic head project.
I wanna be, I wanna be really careful, I wanna be really careful that.
But, no, but I, I'm just naming that, like, if there are different folks at this table, or yeah, some people might have their certain, you know, niche needs or things like that, or lack a lot of the context that we all have. I, I'm, I'm just naming that, you know, I know we can all definitely, you know, commit to clear goals together. We have budget retreat, there's all these processes. But what we're actually voting on is creating like just that bucket of dollars to have more things happen, which could be different things. I just, I just wanna be really transparent with the public because I have people who, like, I feel very values aligned with reaching out, really excited about the opportunity to fund some really specific things that they really care about, or it's a field they work in, or they're in a nonprofit and they're, you know, really invested in this happening. And I just wanna be really clear with people that that doesn't guarantee that that's what comes to fruition with these dollars. Like, I just, I wanna be really transparent with people about that. It could be what some of us hope happens with them, but it's not guaranteed.
Yeah, I, I, and I, I think that is, that is factually accurate, I believe. I would also say every last one of those things are impossible without doing it. I'll also say that if, if we get this done, like, I'm gonna sit down, somebody, I think, I think you're right.
I disagree that we are intending to do all this stuff.
No, you're, you're a hundred percent correct. I just, I just also wanna say with that, I mean, like, I think this is a, this is a tough deal. And that like I, I feel like the city, at least citizens right now, trust local government more than it trusts any other level of government. It's a testament, I think, to the folks around the table. So, I mean, I, I wanna name that. And I think we do have a responsibility to invest these things, not because, because of this deal, but because we told people these are things we care about. And so I think there's a, a level of, you know, us making the decision here to, to do that. So like, you're, you're absolutely right. And I do think if we'd be smart, I've had this conversation with Councilor Gilbert, and I think I'll go and say this on the record because I told you that I would, that when it comes to portions of this that we might wanna go back and protect for the long haul, I think, you know, I'd be very supportive of doing that. Part of this conversation started, as many people remember, with me wanting to protect the children's money, for example. I know there's also a desire to increase a portion of the public safety tax so that that always sticks there. And so I am very supportive of that. I also wanna make sure from a policy perspective, although we could have some really terrible people who get elected one day, that we also make sure. Just when I thought this meeting was doing better than the last one. You know, I, I will, I will, I will say, I think putting future leaders in a position to solve problems of the day is gonna be really, really important. So like I, you know, I think, again, I, I think that voters are smart. There's four hundred and nineteen million dollars that we appropriated last year, and not all of that was protected for very specific purposes. There's a responsibility of being an elected official. And I think, you know, I feel like, at least my small sample size of time here, I think we've proven that, that we're a responsible bunch of people.
Archie, Director Wright.
Oh, yes, thank you. Thank you for the presentation. I will agree with Councilor Bellas, regressive taxes. I heard it said cut into the fat of the rich and into the bones of the poor. And so I think if we're going to have a regressive tax, we either just need, I think exemptions might be a, an idea, or just the ability to communicate to our residents, to some of the, our poorest residents, these are how these investments are gonna disproportionately benefit you, or, you know. That's, that's the thought that I have there. And then also, maybe following up on the conversation you and Councilor Gilbert were having, just about maybe the public safety tax. I see homelessness, public safety, youth and families, animals shelter, and then, you know, business retention. A lot of the feedback that I've been getting from residents isn't necessarily that we don't need these investments, but can you create buckets where the money is just sort of, is sort of just allocated toward? I know that this bucket will be the, you know, homelessness bucket. I, I think if, if we can demonstrate that Safe Move Tulsa is very effective, I don't think people would be against funding it. But it feels to me, and I don't play basketball, I like to watch basketball, but I feel like some folks are thinking of, you know, in the beginning of a basketball game, you take, you have the jump ball. And if you would just write eighty million dollars on the jump ball and it's like, every year you just throw it up and then we're, we're gonna compete over those, those dollars. If we could give a little bit more assurance that these are sort of the buckets that are priorities. I don't, I don't know what sort of mechanism that I, you know, would, would happen, but. That's, that's a sort of concern that I think people are less, you know.
Yeah, I, I, I think I hear you. And, you know, I, I look down at Sarah, I look down at Jack. I don't think there's anything as appropriative as that would stop you all from doing that. I don't think it has to happen prior to voters making a decision about, are you all making decisions into the ballot? I think we could, that could, we could come back and do that. I, I think that's the question, could you create protective buckets for a certain amount of time or forever?
Could I clarify the mechanism to you, Counselor? The two, like, the two ways, I think what I'm hearing, let me know if I'm wrong about what, like, the mayor's saying. I, cause I think one of the proposals is that we could either, like, put this up to a vote and simultaneously work on, or even after, if it passes, work on an ordinance saying, this is how we're planning to generate, do with this revenue. Granted, we know that you can change and edit ordinances. The other option is when you look at something like the public safety tax, where when it got put up to the actual vote, you have the bucket. So those are like the two, which that's a lot.
And you could have other buckets.
Yeah, you could, you have other buckets, which could be more broad or more narrow potentially.
Specific ballot items.
Yeah, I feel like maybe people would feel more comfortable voting yes for it if, when they looked at it, they said, this is what I'm voting for.
Yeah, I, I, I don't, I don't disagree with that. I think, I think we're in a space where people feel very comfortable voting now. And the reason, and so I say this not to say that's not important, so, cause I wanna go back to like the trade-off. Cause I think this is where I'm coming from, saying like, yes, you were, whatever shit, right? I think that would, that would make people feel maybe even better about it. I think, I think public opinion is, people feel really good about it right now. But the, the trade-off for me is, I think, the best possible opportunity that we would have to do this if we don't do it in February is next November, it's a year from now. And, you know, differences of, you know, how we might feel about waiting that long to make investments into homelessness, make investments into public safety, make investments into young people is probably maybe more of a conversation. So I think you're right. I mean, I think like, for me, the, the, the intensity in which we have to communicate to the public around trust that we're gonna do what we said we're gonna do, which, you know, will turn around the budget process really quickly. I think trading that just because of the, the policy and business reason why it's important, I think, for us to assure that we do these things long-term is the offset for me. So I'm not saying, like, I think the, the, the spirit in which you're talking, I do agree with. I think the business policy reason why is, I think about us making next year's budget, us here trying to make sure that we put those dollars to work, us making sure we're accountable, that things are getting better. Saying that we know we have all these problems, but we're gonna wait a year to do something else. I think that is even, that's a tougher thing. And, and just saying is, the seat I, I sit in trying to, trying to make these things work, that makes it really, really tough on policy and business.
No, I, I think I recognize the tension of, you're driving down the car, there's only so much gas, which is funding. We don't wanna run out of gas before, you know, which, if we don't have the funding next year, maybe we start running on fumes. I would, I don't know if, I don't wanna say I disagree with you, but the feedback that I'm receiving is either neutral, I need more questions, or I'm, I am maybe not as excited about it. I, I think because of the education piece, I'm not getting a ton of folks like, heck, yeah, I really wanna. And so, and so it's the, so I reckon, there's, there's a tension that we're, that we're experiencing. And so that's what I'm just trying to work through.
Yeah, and I, and I think I would, what I'm saying, cause I think, I think you're, I, I, I would, I, I believe that to be true. And I guess where I'd land on this is, because I think, I don't know if we all, I think we mostly agree that something has to be done. I think where I've been at and where our team has been at is like figuring out the feasibility of getting something done. And then me as, as mayor, being willing to stick my neck out there to try to go make sure we go get it accomplished by February tenth. I mean, we have seventy-five days if we pass it to go run a campaign to get it done. And that's gonna have to be a place where, you know, answer some of those questions and make sure people feel comfortable. And then we, the ten of us here, are gonna have to deliver come next budget cycle. And then we, the ten of us, are gonna have to figure out, even if it's already passed, if we believe, which I think many of us do, that some of the money needs to be protected for the long haul in certain buckets, I think we should do that, not just because it makes people wanna vote for it, but because it's the best thing politically. I think one of the challenges that we can run into, and I don't think this is, this is the case of it, is that oftentimes, and we'll try to put together things, go to voters, we're making a lot of political decisions about what you go where and who needs this and whatever, and it waters down the impact. I don't think this is happening here. All I'm saying is, is that I think it does make the politics a little bit harder. I think ultimately it makes the policy a lot better because now we're making really, really good policy decisions and not trying to just jump through the bar. I think the reality is people are supportive of the areas. I think people may be hesitant to believe that we can actually deliver on it, and that's what we have to go improve.
Okay, and then last thing, and then I'll, I'll be quiet. I think there's also a sentiment, we use fund balance every year, which a lot of folks view as the emergency fund. So we're, it's like, even though it's not, right? That structurally, there's a, there's an issue. And people are saying, we need to just manage our finances better. Is, would you agree with the statement, we cannot cut our way to, to prosperity? Yes, we should make some cuts, but we just need more revenue to make, to make it work, to where long-term we're not dipping in the fund balance. Is there a way, do you see a city where we can not do these, these investments and cut our way into not dipping into fund balance?
Look, we could, we, theory we could, you know, we could, we could cut the budget to ten million dollars. I mean, it would impact core services, we could, we could certainly do that. I don't think it would be smart to do, I don't think we should do that, but we, but we could. I think the, the reliance on fund balance, to me, is more of a, you know, decision on how you're gonna run your fiscal policy. I don't think it's great to do that because if you do run into a dip here and there, you wanna be able to weather those without, without any interruption. And so like, I don't, and it's a practice for a long time, it's not a bad practice necessarily, it's not horrible practice. I just, it's just, as, as mayor, as chief executive of the city, it's not something that I want to continue. But I don't think it would be smart to try to cut your way there. We would be an outlier in cities our size who made that decision instead of, I mean, as we, if we were to scroll up a little bit, Sarah, if you don't mind, just, no, oh, scroll down, actually. I meant, so the other part goes up, right here. You know, a lot of other cities have made the decision that, you know, what's an appropriate sales tax rate is, you know, important to consider. And I think that's the conversation that we're having right now. I mean, you know, even with the seven tenths of a penny, you know, we are lower than Skye, for example, in Midwest City, Collinsville, Lynnpool, we've got a lot to catch up to. So, so I think, you know, I think voters understand, understand that. And I don't think cutting away there is, is the best way to do it. I think having an honest conversation about the needs of the city, which is, you know, what we wanna go and have with voters is the best way to, to address it.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, thanks for your questions, Counselor Archie. You're one of our newer folks to the city. And I think you're reflecting your community's questions and concerns. I am, I'm gonna do the same. So I just wanna push back a little bit, Mayor, I'm sure you're surprised, on it's either February or November. We have options in, in April and June and August.
So can I just explain the April deal, just a sensitivity there? As a community partner, there was a real tension on other things that other entities are gonna go to the ballot in April. So I think it's really important for, I, I like if, I wanna explain, like, for me, I'm not, February's only important because it helps us on the business side, right? So like, you know, it would be, but we have made a commitment for other community partners who have important things they're concerned about, that April wouldn't be us being a great partner.
Okay, thank you for clarifying.
And, you know, just in my experience, given some of the other issues that are out there, I don't think the August ballot or June ballot are great options for it. I do think November is the, would be the next best available option.
So August is municipal ballot. I repeatedly said, I think that's good timing. So I'd be curious to know how we discuss August or November. I understand, you know, November's a statewide election, there'll certainly be people trying to now. I'm not hearing consensus from you all that we're even all in agreement that if we were to increase sales tax, that we'd wanna go to a point seven. I will just say I've not received any feedback from my community that they wanna do any of it. They have a lot more questions like Counselor Archie had surfaced. Some have asked that because the state cut four point five on groceries, did we just kinda run the clock down and now we're jumping in because that window just closed? And so I've been trying to explain that to them. I appreciate the questions about maybe exemptions. Those are good questions. I don't even know if we are permitted to do something like that by law to kinda carve out on like basic purchases. I would say the average citizen, no matter what income level you're at, you're making grocery purchases on a monthly, maybe even weekly basis. And so that's probably the, the most often they're feeling that sales tax. And I remember when the state was advocating to cut the grocery tax, how much we had talked at these tables about, you know, making sure that our constituents understood they're still gonna see a sales tax at the checkout. And that's the citizen engagement piece. I think we should continue to discuss how we're using fund balances. I'm certainly open to understanding it a different way. I guess one of my questions would be like, if we're not appropriating at the end of the year, where does it go? Does it just go into the rainy day fund or the emergency operations fund, which we have been very diligent about creating and funding? But like, where would those funds go? And then just thinking more on, this is a once in a generation ask, I think. I agree with you, I don't think every five or ten years we should be going out and saying, let's adjust, unless there was some really compelling reason to do it. And/or if the state would adjust our revenue diversification, we might have a different conversation. But I understand the needs right before us. Since the last time we did this, all of us, our children are not born yet. It seems to me like there's, you know, the long-term thing. And so things like carve-outs, like Counselor Bellas brought out, or just helping people understand the difference between a point five and a point seven, which there are people who don't think that we should go higher than our neighbors for a bunch of reasons. I also understand that our neighbors don't have the same challenges that we have to solve. And some of them are contributing to our challenges by not having the services in the nearby communities. So that's all something we need to talk to people about, I think. The other thing that's come up, and I don't know that it's come up this term yet, but there's had been a lot of conversation around citizen participatory budgeting as a concept and a way to engage the public because it is a mystery to them so often. And so I didn't know if this new major monies would come along with some sort of plan like that. We're talking about buckets and we're talking about one way of doing it, which is, you know, running a charter amendment where there's a lockbox and we've done that before. The citizen participatory budgeting also has some caveats around it that other communities engage in. And I know some of us at the table have looked at that over the years. So those are kind of, when we're talking about policies, things that have come up for me personally and then really from constituents, it's, we're all doing more with less and they don't understand why we can't do what we need to do without coming back to them. And maybe we just need to make, you know, the case of how much all of this is gonna cost. I think the thirty million dollars to end street sleeping is stunning to a lot of our constituents in a way. We've not talked about it in that way before. So it is a reality that it takes an investment. We've not talked about it in that way before, so it is a reality that it takes an investment. People are concerned if we build it, they will come. And so we're the most generous city in America, and we have so much support. The narrative, and I'm not saying it's true, but the narrative out there with some people is because we offer all these services, just more people are coming. And so I know that's not true. I've done the pit count. We looked at the data. Um, the majority of people that are experiencing these challenges are from our communities for a variety of reasons. But, um, that is a big concern right now. When we're, when I'm talking to people on fixed incomes or, um, you know, stretching the dollar further, they're like, I have to scramble to put food on my table and do all these things. And, you know, now I'm supposed to like also fund people who are experiencing homelessness. There's some people that feel that's necessary. I think there's a lot of people that don't understand why it's thirty million dollars and, you know. I, I think you just, the, the clutch presentation was stunning, I think, to a lot of people. Um, and I, I've tried to point people at Houston. Houston made like a hundred million dollar investment. They got to functional zero on, um, veteran homelessness, which we are very close to. They're already here in Tulsa. I think a lot of people don't know that. Um, and they're a bigger community than we are, but I think those are the big questions. I did have something, um, about the fifteen million on the mayor's office of children, family and youth. I see you kinda like did have these. Where's the one with the?
It was between after-school and workforce shift.
So kind of like, um, school age versus young adults?
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's one way to think about it.
Okay, and then, um, what other communities of similar size to ours has like a fifteen million dollar investment like this ongoing?
So, there's a couple, um.
Are there any in Oklahoma?
Uh, I don't know what Oklahoma City does. There's really only one comp, comp we have in the state, so I'm not exactly sure what Oklahoma City does in that realm. I mean, if you, so, I mean, I'm looking at Orlando here, Oakland, we heard, Omaha, Nebraska, uh, New Orleans, um, Baltimore.
So they all have these dedicated children funds?
Uh, let's see, uh, Oakland has a three percent set aside, if I'm not mistaken. Uh, some of them come from things like marijuana resources, so some cities. I mean, the thing to remember is we are far more restricted than a lot of cities are. So, um, this is the mechanism that we have, and I understand people being very frustrated about it, and I wish I could change it. Um, tried for eight years, for the record. Um, didn't quite get there, um, and I think there's a conversation to be had there. I think the, and I think this is, goes with the honest conversation deal, and I think this is true, and this is the reason why like, a tax increase is not something that, you know, I want to do. Um, I think it's necessary, I don't want to do it, is because there are a zillion reasons to be against increasing taxes. There, there's nothing but reasons to be against it. Um, and I think there are reasons to be for investing in things, and it's just, there's, that's the mechanism to do it. And I, I do remember, I do recall that, at least, I think I was told, and I don't remember exactly who told me, that, they don't like this as unique to Tulsa, but like, at one point I did have councillors who are elected tell me that for a long time, the city did not necessarily think homelessness as an example was something for the city to do. And, and I think we have, we, 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 uh, we are evolving on that. And it's not because, you know, you know, we wanna make sure we're a magnet for it. It's because it is a true and real impact to businesses, to neighborhoods, to schools. Um, you know, the, the cuts that we've seen in mental health and everything else, I mean, it's there. And the reality is thirty-one hundred people fall into it every year. I saw an article in the Tulsa World today that said philanthropy is paying forty-two percent of the tab on it. Um, this is a public policy challenge, as is, in my opinion, the children and youth, as is all the other things. I mean, we should not be surprised that certain things happen in our community if we're not investing to make sure that they don't. And it's not a criticism, it's just like, we just know more about how all these things feed into each other, I think is, is probably a, a better, um, a better way to put it. And so everybody's constituents that are saying we're very concerned about this, um, they should be concerned about it and everything else. I mean, I think they also share concerns. And, and again, I've just, the, uh, all the data that I've seen, people are also concerned about the issues that, uh, this aims to begin to mitigate very aggressively. And I think, you know, we should lean into that. And so I, I think you asked a question about the, um, the different dates in the point five versus the point seven. I don't know if that was a, a question that, uh, you wanted me to, to respond to or not.
That's fine. I mean, I just think some of us around the table have said maybe not point seven, maybe more of a point four or point five.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think in that case, again, I mean, I feel like, um, based on everything that I've seen, and, you know, Facebook posting maybe a few messages off the stadium, which I know the, they, the challenge, the concerns are much broader for the record. Um, people in this community, by and large, understand that we need to do something dramatically different. I think, given them an opportunity, voters meeting them where they are, I think us being accountable to how we spend money, should they approve it, is gonna be really critically important. Um, I don't, I don't necessarily, and again, I think this is, I'm the only person who airs on this side, I think, um, right now. Airing on the side of what allows us to have the best chance of addressing these issues in the most aggressive way that we can plan for right now is where I'm airing on. Uh, and it's in large part because, you know, I feel as mayor, a tremendous amount of pressure, which is a good thing, to get things done. And I think people across the community recognize that too. And, uh, I want them to have the opportunity, um, to, to make a decision on it. And I will say this, I mean, I don't know if there's additional questions, I won't, I won't, I want to reiterate. I've heard from folks, um, after Jackie?
She has questions, I have questions, and then we gotta really wrap up.
All right, let's go. Go ahead.
We can go over.
Um, I appreciate everything that my colleagues have asked and the, uh, explanation, Mayor. I just, I'm going to make mine short. I'm glad that you clarified that the, there are other opportunities for the elections coming up. And I really wanted to kind of clear the narrative that's being spread through social media and whatnot, that we aren't, as a council, letting citizens vote. And, um, I don't think anybody here on the council is opposed to bringing issues to the voters. I think, I can speak for myself, that, um, I think we need to educate the voters more deeply and clearly, and be more concise, and offer them a timeframe that's going to be a lot more practical, uh, than seventy-five days out. And the fact that we have holidays coming up, we have tax season coming up. There's just a lot of, uh, extenuating circumstances, I think, that are going to make, uh, a vote to the people in February, is something that we have to really consider. So, that's all I have to say.
I, I hear you, and, you know, my, my desire made it pretty clear. Um, and I think it's just having the responsibility of actually, you know, trying to pull these things together in a way it's gonna, where I can go tell citizens we're getting these things done. My desire still remains, and I, and I, I'm comfortable knowing there's not a lot of people around this table who support it. Um, my desire is that the council takes a vote on November nineteenth on February. And I think if there's, after that, you guys don't support it, and you wanna get together and put together a council process that makes, that, that gets you all to a more comfortable place, I think that's, you know, that's, I feel, I don't have to be convinced of it. Um, I can tell you, like, for me, and I, and, and again, like, I, I don't like the short time window, um, you know, 'cause I, I, I want everybody to feel comfortable, but this, I think citizens understand it, um, enough in a way that we can go out and communicate with them, uh, get them to a comfortable place by the time we get to February. Um, I think these are all areas that folks are not, like, this is not us taking some diversion from what we've talked about to do some random stuff. This is a straight, straight line. Um, and I think, you know, the things that we, as an administration, have set out to do and how we've implemented, we haven't done everything right, but I'm very proud of how we, how we've done it. And I want us to continue to have the continuity as we move forward. And, and a lot of people may say, man, Mr. Mayor, you're wrong, like, council thinks you guys screw up all the time. Um, but, but I, I believe it to be critical, um, that February is a, is a day, and I, I want everybody to try to get comfortable with it, and if not, I understand it. But, uh, I think, I, I, I hope you all take a vote on the strength of the fact that I feel like I've been pretty upfront during this stuff.
I appreciate that. I just, that narrative though, that you just said that we don't all support it, and I'm not trying to start.
No, no, I meant the February tenth date.
Yeah, so, and I want the constituents and the people that are listening, that we haven't made a decision
Sure.
on this, and that we haven't been presented enough, uh, information to go within this seventy-five day span to convince people. So that's, that's all I'm saying, is that it would be helpful to let people know that we're all working this together, and that it's not a, it's not a council versus mayor's staff issue. This is something that we're all working on together for the better of the public. And so I just want that narrative out there, that, you know, we're not, we're not trying to.
To be, to be clear, I don't think anybody has a problem with the staff, I think maybe.
I'm just saying, you know, I, I just wanna clear a narrative that, um, that they have time as well as, you know, as being citizens, to be able to decide. And so, you know, I don't think that saying that we here at the table are not for it is, is not accurate.
Yeah, that, unless anybody else has any questions.
Okay, so, and I appreciate you answering all these questions. Just a baseline, just so I can think about moving forward. This is Plan A. What is Plan B?
Uh, this is, for me, Plan A, B, C, and D through Z. I think if, if my alphabet plan, for lack of a better term, uh, doesn't work out, I mean, I look forward to, uh, how the council would, would wanna proceed. Um, I, I think for me, my alphabet plan in this case also brings us back into the budget process. Still has us plenty of time to make decisions about how we might protect certain pots of, pots of money. Um, but, you know, I don't think that we would be having a revenue raising conversation had I, had we not brought it up as an administration. And I think it's critically important for me in that through line and, and how we've been working, uh, to take that to voters. And I think that might be different, like, you know, as far as this very direct conversation, I think it's fine. But, you know, for, for me, I think February, because it allows us to continue to have some, you know, assurance on how we're gonna invest, we at least, you know, it'll, we'll know one way or the other. Um, as somebody, you know, leading this organization in a, in that way, is critically important. So this is, for me, now, there might be a Plan B that the council initiates in Orstun. I think that's great. I mean, I think it's, we basically switched places in that, um, in, in, in roles as it relates to, you know, what the future could look like. Um, but for me, it's, it's very much focused, and it's because I'm more driven by the challenges out in front of us. Councilor Bingle mentioned last time, uh, that, uh, kind of maybe a, I, I love if you're trying to say it was a positive or negative personality trait of mine, uh, don't answer that question, actually.
Ask, ask Aaron first.
Yeah, yeah, but, you know, my deal is a focus on being able to address the issues. And, you know, if, you know, you all's a legislative body, you're like, hey, pump the brakes on it. That's, that's, that's your decision, and I, and I understand that, I respect that.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Um, last comments for me, they'll be a little bit repetitive. Um, you said, I don't have to be convinced by it. Um, I, I do have to be convinced by it. Um, and that's what I've been trying to, to get my head around. You and I have talked many, many times about various elements of this, not all elements of it.
Yep.
Um, today we are given thirty-one pages to, to look through. Um, and so some of those documents we've seen, not all of those documents for sure. Um, and try to listen and work through this all now in a seven-day period. That's all we have left, beginning now on the nineteenth. So I am trying to wrap my head around what you're trying to do. I know you have goals out there. I think I've supported you in every single one of the goals you've brought down here, whether it be the budget or other elements. Uh, you put children, youth and families on our retreat agenda, um, at the very end. And, you know, we've, we've been able to put hundreds of thousands and two hundreds of thousands of dollars into that program, um, but still haven't all been used yet, because the fiscal year isn't done. And we still have a lot of work to do and a lot to learn. But it's, it's hard for me to say, okay, I could vote for this next week, um, to give fifteen million dollars potentially to this program without fully even knowing where those dollars are going to go. We, we talked about it for five minutes or so, but I don't know if really we're gonna receive revenue and then distribute that to nonprofit organizations, or how exactly that will be used across the city. I think it's still, I, I think we're, we're building it as it goes, rather than knowing definitively before it goes where those dollars will be spent. And I said, how I'm wired, it's the, it's the same way with Clutch. You know, I've talked to Clutch for thirty minutes. Well, we all talked to Clutch for thirty minutes collectively. And I know Shane has arranged for some councillors to talk to Clutch on Friday. Um, I'm gonna be out of town, so I can't participate in that, but still, that's five days before we're being asked to vote on this. So I, I would like to build this together. I, I, I don't want you to say, hey, um, if you don't like my plan, then you can come up with your plan, and then maybe I'll, I'll get on board with that plan. I would really try to find a united way to move forward on this, uh, together, so that we can really do a lot of what-if, what-if analysis. And, um, go line by line through a process and say, you know what? At the end of the day, we, we think we may need point five-three, uh, percent as a, as an increase in revenues to take care of homelessness, public safety, and a few of those other items, uh, because, because we, we can't get our heads around spending so much in these other categories. But at least we would have done it together in public around this table, and then given it to the public for them to, um, learn about and then provide feedback on, and then let us move forward with their feedback incorporated into our ultimate plan. Done it four times, it's been very successful. I, I know you have mandates, I know you have goals, and I wanna support you on those goals. But I can, I, I cannot support this process. I can't process all the information that's just really been dropped on this table publicly for the first time, and, and get myself to a yes in a very short amount of time on it. It's not just an eighty million dollar project, it's a, it's billions of dollar project, because it's a, it's a permanent, undedicated tax.
Yeah, I mean, it will eventually reach a billion dollars after a very, very long time. So yes, man, I think be careful saying like this, but I get where you're coming from. I would also say, like, I mean, I did come into this conversation, I think voters in a, or this community's in a spot where they would be surprised to know that elected officials haven't spent more time, like, thinking about approaching these street homelessness. I think I came into this thinking that there was more that had been thought about. And so like, I, I, I think the, and, and I'm not saying it's true, but it's like, it kinda shocks me and say, well, we haven't talked to Clutch. It's like, but we know the issue, and we know, but it, it's, it's, it's gonna be expensive. And I, and I, I, so I think that there's a lot of things that we do know, and I do appreciate that. So I, I don't say it 'cause I believe that's true, but I know it's not true. Like, you guys have had the three H task force, I looked at the other deals, the things the other day. Um, everything from the pre-approved plans to the outreach stuff and everything, it's very consistent. And so like, while Clutch hasn't been the person that you've talked to, I think my point is, these are all the conversations that we have had. And I think maybe in some ways, we made it about one entity. And so I, I would actually say, Counselor, that you and all the councillors around have had these conversations, and you've been very thoughtful about these conversations for a very, very long time. But what I, what I'm concerned about, and I will take this as a criticism on me, is that I've done a really poor job drawing the connection between every conversation that you all have had and what this is, because while it's true that Clutch plan is something, like, clutching up itself, what is not true is that you have not, you all haven't already been leaders in doing this stuff already.
It's not just discussions, we've had a lot of work done on this.
No, this is, that, that's actually my point. Yeah, that's my point. My point is, is that, it sounded, it sounded like a dig at first, it was not a dig, it was like, they would be, yeah, no, easy. I would say, people would be surprised to think that, and I guess I should say, and they would be wrong, because I've seen, so the, I can't remember offhand completely, but from the three H task force, I saw low-barrier shelter. I saw outreach workers. I saw career-proof plan, I saw encampment decommissioning. I saw all those things. That is what's in that document for, from Clutch. The only thing that's new is to do it at scale is gonna be thirty million dollars, and this is an organization. that does the things that this city has said for a long time we needed to do, I guess is the point.
Can we get the backend of like the methodology behind the numbers? Because per your point, I'm sure it lines up with a lot of that. I mean, that's, that's just another thing that would be helpful.
Yeah, my, my, my point is, no, that's fair. I mean, I think my, I guess my point of that is, is that it's not inconsistent with all the things that have been talked about here for a very, very long time. The fact that me as mayor have done a poor job of communicating that to you as a counselor is a failure on my part. But if you had five days with Clutch, everything that they would be talking about are things that you would say, oh yeah, we've been talking about that for a very, very long time. Right? And so that, and that, that's kind of, that's, that was my overarching point to not make everybody upset.
No, and I, and I would, I would broaden it a little bit to, I'd broaden that even more to children, youth and families. And we haven't, we really, we really have been lost around this table with some of the conversations that we've had. We haven't received a, a lot of answers to some questions that we put out there. And then
So, so.
And then we get confused by some of the information that's, that's out. And you don't have to respond to everything.
Well, I do, I do think it's important because like I, I think what the team has desired to do. When you all, when there's been questions about the office of children and families, I think the information that you've gotten back has been very process heavy because trying to show like, hey, we talked about participatory budgeting as an example. It's kind of the same kind of thing as you're arriving to decisions on the things that you might do. Which is not, doesn't speak to, well, if you had five dollars to spend, what would you spend them all? We're just now in that conversation around, well, workforce and out of school time would be those two areas, right? And so I think what you've gotten from the office is like, hey, counselors, we want you to see that we're being really thoughtful about how we're coming up with these, with these ideas. But they certainly informed what's, what's on the piece of paper. So, but I, but I hear what you're saying.
Yeah. And then, then the last piece just has to do with the order of things. If, if we vote to put this on the ballot, then we'll be doing voter education, telling the voters, hey, here's what we came up with on your behalf. Rather than going out and saying, hey, what can we put in the, the project? Or let, let us tell you about these opportunities that are included in this tax packages. Get your feedback and then incorporate it into the tax package. So I'm just not a,
I think you're doing both of it.
Voter, I, I'm not a big voter education fan where we, where we put things on them. I'm, I'm aware of incorporating their opinions into it. And then obviously you have to educate them about the fact that, yeah, we're going to have a vote on X date. But if you're, if you're trying to convince them after we as a body have already passed it, I, I think you're kind of dead in the water.
Well, I mean, I, I think that, I think at least on the dead in the water part on voters, I don't think that's true. I think voters from a consistency standpoint, understand that these issues are critically important. This is different than saying, we're going to build something. Are we going to do that? And do we support this individual capital project, right? Like, I think this is a very different conversation. It is a conversation around investing in these areas to address these problems, to get to functional zero homelessness, to put kids on a pathway to economic mobility, to increase our public safety numbers and, and such, increase public safety across this community. So like, it's not, it's not the typical package that I think has been done over and over again here. This is a, this is significantly different. And I think that the priorities, mayor council retreat, the priorities reflected here are where voters are frankly. And that's been validated in every piece of data that I have seen. And so I don't think that we are far ahead of voters. I think on balance, I think voters understand the predicament that the city is in. And I think voters want to be a part of that conversation, which is, which is why I have my push. But I will also say, everything you said, very reasonable. And so I understand that. And I understand where you're at. And I understand where a number of counselors are. And I still am gonna push and hope that we can get to a vote on November nineteenth because I just, again, I, I go back on the, I'm very concerned about us having big gaps and being able to deliver things and start things and stopping things. I think that's an even greater frustration for people. We'll educate voters.
Just quick math, thirteen years to get to a billion bucks. It's so long I've been on the council, so it goes by really fast.
You, you still look as good as the first day you showed up.
His hair color hasn't changed at all.
Uh huh, no, no, it really has. Okay. Anything else? Anyone else? Thank you very much for your time on this today.
Thank you.
Whatever item it is, we are adjourned.
Thank you.
Be back.